The time is 6:00 PM. We are going to begin this meeting with a public hearing. This is the public hearing for the 2023 to 24 Bedford School District budgets. At 6:01, we will close the public hearing and move on to 2.01 by beginning of the lunch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to 3.01. Do I have a motion?
I will read the brief agenda as presented.
And a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions for rolling aside agenda? Roll call.
Director Castro.
Yes.
Director Pique.
Yes.
Director Dorder.
Yes.
Director Eason.
Yes.
Director Lynch.
Oh, yes.
Director Peetich.
Director Simpson.
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us to 4.01, our fall, good rebounding, right? Our Fall Letter of Intent Signing. I'd like to acknowledge the following students for signing for their post-high school, college beginnings. Trent Allen, Justin Anderson, Luke Bohannon, Connor Chase, Spencer Valmetio, Natalie Hitt, Joseph Hutter Miller, Isaiah Martinez, Elijah Mendoza, Malachi Moore, Xavier Cox, John Powell, Jordan Roberts, Haley Scholbra, and Amaya Nguyen. Congratulations on your signings with your assigned colleges and best of luck. Next up brings us to 4.02, Director Simpson.
Congratulations to our student council that have received the 2023 National Gold Council of Excellence. Winning the National Gold Council of Excellence Award is a testament to the highest standard of quality that a council consistently demonstrates in its operation and in its projects and activities. Congratulations.
Thank you. That brings us to 4.03, Director Lynch.
This past Saturday, over 50 band orchestra and choir students participated in the Iowa High School Music Association's State Solo and Ensemble Contest at Davenport West High School. Everyone received ratings in a variety of events, including solos, duets, trios, quartets, and quintets. We honor all of the students who participated and congratulate them. Takes a lot of work to be able to do that. A special shout-out goes to Kaylee Wolf in trumpet solo, and Jack Tuckaine and Jalen Thorson in string duet, who received Best of Center designation and have been invited to perform at the IHSMA Outstanding Performance Recital in May. Congratulations to all.
Thank you. That brings us to 4.04, Director Castro.
Congratulations to our boys swimming team. Seven VHS boys swimming team members made the Quadsay Almedto swimming team. The Bulldogs made up nearly half of the first team with seniors Keaton Lieber, juniors Drew Gasper and Ricky Gilmore, and sophomore Jake Madolski, Kiefer Romer, and Hudson Lieber. Mateo Sirma, sophomore, made honorable mention.
Thank you. Brings us to 4.05, Director Dorder.
Congratulations goes out to our FPLA students and their performance at the State Leadership Conference. I won't read their names and no words if they won. Charles Silver with first place in impromptu speaking. Maxwell Rantilla with first place in client service. Brooklyn McNeil and Dolan Sullivan with first place in public service management. Brooklyn McNeil and Winston Shainer with first place in marketing. Maxwell Rantilla, Maya Miller, and Charles Silver with first place in vocabulary and D-Lay. Charles Silver and Maya Miller took second place in hospitality management. Jason Lynn in third place in help desk. Joseph Hutter Miller with sixth place in insurance and risk management. Joseph Hutter Miller and Winston Shainer with eighth place in sports entertainment. Brett Teeter with eighth place in business calculations. Mia Liscano and Brett Teeter with ninth place in business ethics. Maxwell Rantilla with ninth place in public speaking. Seth Ration with ninth place in intro financial math. Brett Teeter, Joseph Hutter Miller, and Jason Lynn with ninth place in vocabulary and D-Lay. I believe we have some of them depending on the name of the name. It stands, do you recognize it?
Thank you for being here this evening. We never get tired of reading your names. So, thank you. Thank you for continuing to make us so proud.
All right, that brings us to 4.06. At this time, any member of the audience may address the board with comments about items of interest or concern. Citizens wishing to address the board during public comment must complete the public input form located in the back corner of the room prior to speaking at the podium. Please state your name and limit your remarks to three minutes. As a reminder, Iowa law prohibits discussing specific employees or their job performance. We do caution those making public comments that what they say could violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy. And if they are unsure of the legal effect of their remarks, they should seek independent advice prior to making comment. All right, moving on. 4.07, Board Chair Commendation. Director Castro, can I begin with you, sir?
Yeah, just real quickly, I just attended the volunteer recognition just had in the library and just there have been things already mentioned, but just thanks for all the things that volunteers do. Unpaid, but you're still coming every day or as a volunteer as you can and helping the kids. And I think that's just super. So, thanks for all the volunteers that help out in other things.
Thank you, Director Simpson.
I was able to stop by Bedford Middle this morning for my own building for ISS testing. It was nice to see that the focus of the building was all on testing. There were lots of ministers in the hall, very few kids in the hall, really well organized. I talked to them about how they organized and everything, and it was really well done.
Thank you. Director Champion.
Just will repeat what Director Castro said about her volunteer vics. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Lynch.
I got to attend the students' first banquet last week as well. It's always a pleasure to see students succeeding in all kinds of powerful areas. And it's also great to hear about the teachers that inspire them. I'm really happy to be there. On Sunday, I was able to attend the art show of our elementary students' art at the feet. And I was thrilled to see so much new inspiration. I always liked seeing women inspired by the past, so I talked about that before. I saw Jasper Johns. I saw lots of other artists' inspiration and the work that our kids are doing in our classes as well.
Thank you. Director Dorder.
Yes, I've had a busy couple of weeks. Also attended the students' first banquet, also one of my most favorite activities to attend, to thank each other and give a opinion. And this week, I was able to attend the EMS blood drive. Again, I was successful with my blood regen kit, so I'm patting my own back. I think I topped 11 gallons that day over the course of my lifetime. So, encourage everyone to have good blood if you're not a blood donor. And then I also stopped by again later in the week just because it is the BEA at Bedford School. And it was just really fun to spend about an hour of my day hanging around, getting some ideas in the hallways. They are just a joy to be with. And then tonight, I also attended the volunteer appreciation award banquet. And just want to thank everyone who couldn't attend. Your efforts are all very much appreciated. Next week, several of us will also attend the Summit on Student Success. So, I'm very much looking forward to that, the two-day event in Des Moines. Excited to dig in and learn more about how our students succeed. If not obvious to everyone so far, I just want to call out tonight's meeting. So many awards, so many recognitions, so many kids thriving and doing such wonderful things. We have great, great high achievement status. So, draw attention to that if it's not obvious that I've ever been with my.
Thank you.
She would mind if you had something there.
Please go right ahead, sir.
You look ahead, but things coming, and everybody, I am looking quite forward to going to see you in the new.
Opening night, no? Oh, I knew Dylan would have us covered.
I had to remind him of his name.
So, no, yes, Dylan will have us covered though, for sure. So, Director Peetich. Thank you. And I will just echo the sentiments of my colleagues, the volunteer appreciation. Thank you, Celeste, for coming together with lovely video. Any opportunity that I get to see kids and staff say great things about what's going on is, makes it all worth it. So, thank you very much.
All right. Brings us to 4.08, BEA. And we'll be on paper.
Good evening. We are in busy mode in adult school year. We appreciate parents' parent conferences at middle and elementary levels over the last couple of weeks. We truly appreciate the partnership, and now it helps you to see us on the team. I know high school conferences are next week, and they are also leading forward to the new schools of parents. High class has been full swing. High school has finished, well, very close with their makeup. Middle school finishes their testing schedule tomorrow, and then on the makeup for us as well. And the elementary start tomorrow, and vote for next week. I can say that the kids have done a wonderful job, and have the staff, and we stand our right to the government. We are looking forward to getting to tables and negotiations for November. We also have a happy Joe's night that week for our members, Wednesday, May 4 to 7. All of our members are welcome soon, including coming. The next week, we will have a monthly meeting at Paul Norton, and we'll be receiving nominations for an association happen for next year. And our members will be voting for next week, and they can try to assist in our voting. So, that's a good one.
Thank you. Thank you. Brings us to 4.09, Bessa. Well, Melissa, in and out. You gotta get down there. In and out.
It's hard to believe that there's just under 30 days left in this school year. Between state testing conferences and preparing for graduation, there's a lot going on district-wide. One of the things going on, as Director Norton mentioned, is the Ad Finale Production of VHS, which is open there around at 7 o'clock. Tickets for $12, and can be purchased online or at the door. This is part of the one week to invite everyone to see us by tickets and come see the show. I've been lucky enough to be in the pack during some rehearsals, and I can promise you that we're going to have to show. Bessa is looking forward to opening negotiations along with the FSA the second of May, and we will not hold any further meetings until we return. Hopefully ratify our proposed contracts.
Thank you. Enjoy the show. Brings us to 4.10, Don.
Oh geez, I was so fed. I mean, my report pulled up on the screen today.
You got this.
Okay, so, good evening, everybody. It's good to see you all. I have a little off-keeper kind of short as well. We have a lot of upcoming events for student council as we near the end of the school year. We're extending the application deadlines this Friday for incoming student council members, and then we'll be doing interviews May 2nd. Candidates will be sending out speeches to the student body, and then they'll vote accordingly. Little Leaders will be this Saturday from 1 to 4, as I discussed, where we have some elementary schoolers learning some leadership skills. The Senior Service Project will be also Saturday in the morning before Little Leaders, which we will be cleaning appropriate parts. So, we're going to go get a bunch of trash and make it nice and clean for everybody. The Variety Show will be next Friday in the pack. We have around 12, 12 to 15-ish acts, which are going to be anything from singing. I know there's a dancer this year, and then sometimes there's like positions, whatever. Powder Bub will be May 3rd. That is the junior class fundraiser, so helping prom bring to them next year. Community Service Week will be May 15 through the 19th during Pride. So, all VHS students can, we're going to be writing letters to veterans and making some tie blankets, I believe. Those are still in the works. The old new banquet, which is kind of like the welcoming ceremony and the saying goodbye ceremony to seniors for student council, will be May 16th at 5:00 PM in the pack in common. Then we're going to be having a bonding event next week. So, just some high school general, obviously you guys know most of this stuff going on. Congrats to the tennis teams for most of their recent wins.
For both their recent wins that we've done, sorry, I couldn't even tell.
For both their recent wins that we've done, sorry, I couldn't even tell. Back to slide one. Um, boys swimming, seven swimmers were selected, as Mr. Castro said. Um, V H S pool duster tryouts are gonna be next week. Um, softball tryouts are gonna be May first and second, and then A P exam testing is coming up for students, so wish them luck. I S S testing is coming to a close and then just some other reminders, our situation is open and in transfer conference, which will be next week. Um, obviously the musical, as Melissa said, it premieres tonight, the Adam family. I'm going tomorrow, I'm very, very excited. Um, twelve dollars, they'll be running it all weekend and then their final show will be one P M on Sunday. Um, so just some end of the year information for the, those of you interested. Um, May sixth from eight to ten will be the prom, our prom at the Putnam. Guest forums are now available, the activities office will be next Friday. The after-prom event, not student council affiliated, but that will be at eleven P M at the Netflix. Um, senior award night will be May ten, um, that's where we're gonna be awarding the scholarships, recognizing class officers, et cetera. Um, the seniors' last day is May twenty-fourth, it's actually the twenty-three days tomorrow, like two other times. Graduation rehearsal will be after school and then graduation will be May on the twenty-seventh at one P M in the gym. And then last day for everyone else, the evening second. Second to last board meeting, I got one more after those guys, so sad. So, I did wanna kind of share something fun with you all. So, I reached out to my class and student council and asked if anyone would be willing to talk about where they're going next year, so you guys kind of have an idea of where we're all going. This is the, the senior class for student council. Um, L Dunn's gonna be going to the University of Iowa, majoring in political science and African-American studies on pre-law track. Avery Franton will be going to Carthage College, majoring in nursing. Victoria East, Western Illinois University, majoring in history and education with a minor in D S L. Keenan Buckley will be going to the University of Iowa, majoring in sociology with a minor in German. We also have Jean McFermont, University of Iowa, majoring in biomedical engineering and minoring in sign language. Josh Gunn will be going to Western Illinois University, majoring in forensic psychology. Brooke Magistrelli will be going to the U S Naval Academy, majoring in mathematics, which will serve our country. And then for the senior class president, vice president, Wikea will be going to, um, Western Illinois University, majoring in music education. And as you can tell by my very brightly colored shirt, I will be going to Iowa State, majoring in animal ecology with a focus on animal care. Thank you so much for your time, everybody.
I can't let you graduate high school without one last book I did in a lesson. The second to the last board meeting, an alphabet. And that means the one before that, the last was your anti-anultimate. And the next one will be your ultimate board meeting.
He does this to us all the time, Ellen, you're not alone.
Good luck, sir.
Thank you. There won't be a quiz on those. Quiz, like, quiz comes later, it's how you get your diploma. That brings, that brings us to four point one one, Dr. Morris, take it away.
Well, I don't even know how I can top any of what's just happened. Um, I do want to thank our, um, as B E A mentioned, we did just hold parent conferences for elementary and middle school students. But I definitely want to thank our staff and families at both those levels for their flexibility as we had to adjust one night of parent teacher conferences due to, um, Iowa weather. So, um, although I think one of the unintended positive consequences that came of that is we're hearing feedback in different teacher groups, um, is that they might, um, have liked having conferences, um, only one night over two weeks. We didn't have to go back to that. It can get exhausting after they teach all day and I see Rachel out there nodding her head. Um, and so we're looking into that and having conversations with our teaching teams about what that could look like for next year and do you know high school is gonna block their conferences next week? Um, April tenth, staff professional development day. I just wanna give another shout out to the entire planning committee, um, our staff for their just extreme engagement and our partners from the A E A and University of Iowa, Scanron and the Hope Center. Um, we were able to provide staff on our professional development day, um, Monday, the tenth, a couple hours where they could just come over here to the high school and we get engaged in activities of their choice. Everything from nature hikes to swimming in the pool. I believe we had three elementary teachers that treaded water for forty-five minutes and I don't, I heard that their mouths did not stop the entire time and that had a blast. Um, we also had sessions on mindfulness and just different breathing and just ways to just refocus and reset our own selflessness and taking care of ourselves, so we can take care of our students. Um, feedback I've heard, um, was positive and we were just so glad we could offer that to our hardworking staff. As everyone's mentioned tonight, spring musical picks off tonight. I cannot wait to see it on Saturday night, but if you haven't bought tickets, please do so. There's shows tomorrow at seven, Saturday at seven, and Sunday at one. Um, I want to thank our future ready coordinator, Haley Coit, for the college financial planning night that she offered to our, um, parents and guardians and our sisters last Tuesday night. I attended not only as a superintendent, but the mother of a junior and I will have to say it was a very Iowa-ny experience. And I'm trying to figure out how to turn back time, so I don't have to figure out how to pay for college a year from now. So, but it was, it was full of really great information, um, to help us start moving ahead of that. Um, students' first banquet, as, as other directors have indicated, what an incredible event. I want to thank the entire high school administrative staff, um, and their, um, office team for what they do to put that on. What a special event for students and teachers. Um, you'll always leave feeling just so, um, fulfilled by the great work that our teachers are doing, um, how they inspire our students to overcome challenges, but also how our students inspire our teachers to continue to persevere even when times are tough. Um, I had the privilege of attending last Thursday night, Ryan's club meeting, I was asked to speak. Um, I will never turn down an opportunity to share with our community the great things that are happening in our district and to brag about our district, so that was fun. We held our last S I A P meeting, our, um, school improvement advisory meeting this past Monday. I have to just two shout outs for our director of curriculum, Jamie Wilson, for her leadership that night. Um, the end of the year with wrapping up our conversation around parent engagement. And, um, Rhonda Nelson, our N T S S literacy facilitator and our director of curriculum, had the opportunity to share also with that group the work, the process, um, and our next steps around elementary leaders literacy and our adoption of C K L A. So, I think that was well received by the parents there. And then I had the opportunity to be with our parent executive council last night. They are a fun group. You're gonna hear from a couple of them later this evening about the great work that our P T A, P T Os, um, parent link and boosters and B F A groups are doing. What continues to inspire me in these meetings is just how we have, we continue to come together each month, um, and to share great ideas and best practices and how they take away from each other. Um, it's not a competition about who's raising more money or who's doing more, but it's really turned into just this opportunity to learn from each other and get better from each other, because when that happens, our students and staff only benefit more. And there's just some exciting work being done by our parent organizations, um, and I appreciate what they're doing. And then we had our volunteer recognition event tonight and so thank you to Celeste Miller, our director of communications, um, Monica Plink, Erica Dalberg, and Kathy Guse for all that they did to make the event so special and successful. There's a lot of work that goes into pulling that off and so thank you. But also thank you to our volunteers that were able to be with us tonight and the ones that aren't. Um, your amazing and the countless hours that you give to our schools, both inside the schools and even at home for how you support our teachers. Words don't express it and we, we wouldn't be the organization we are if it weren't for this training you do. So, thank you. That's why we're here.
Thank you. That brings us to five point zero one, do I have a motion?
I have a motion to approve five point zero one, consent in general is.
Thank you, one second.
Yes, the second.
Oh, please. Director J. Green.
Yes.
Director Dora. Yes. Director Easton. Yes. Director Lynch.
Yes.
Director Povich.
Yes.
Director Smithson. Yes. Director Castro.
Yes.
Bush, big, seven. Thank you, that brings us to six point zero one, the parent organization presentation.
Absolutely, so, um, we were approached by some of our parent organizations. They really wanted to have the opportunity to come and share. I want them to be able to brag about all the work that they're doing. And so we have Annie Thomas tonight, who is one of our members of our parent link at the middle school. And we have Jen Bodiker, who is, um, one of our P T A, um, exec board members, um, at Grant Wood. So, ladies, please come up and join us tonight.
I'm Annie Thomas, um, I'm the mother of three children. I have a homeschool eighth grader, a sixth grader at B M S, and a third grader at Hoover. And I'm representing parent link, which is the P T O at the middle school. Um, the parent link was established in eighteen eighty-four and although I was not around then, I assume that they chose the name because they wanted to establish the link between parents, teachers, admin, students, and also the other organizations within the middle school, like the student council. Uh, the pandemic brought parent link basically to a halt. There was very little happening and this is our first school year trying to revive it. Being a P T O means that all the parents and caregivers of, sorry, my voice is, um, all the parents and caregivers are automatically members. So, there's no application, there's no dues, and I think that creates a very open and inclusive opportunity for new parents. This year, operations have included supporting student council activities by hosting concessions at the dances, revisiting our charter and writing stand-ables, appreciating our teachers through conference dinners, an upcoming week of activities for teacher appreciation, establishing an Amazon wishlist that allows parents to support specific ones of teachers, uh, re-establishing an operating budget, operating concession stand at the district's STEM Expo, organizing multiple assignment donating opportunities, running a B M S holiday apparel store, and organizing volunteers for other B M S efforts like, um, book fair, treat the teachers, and other student council events that are coming up yet this year. So, although some of these components are still aspirational, we continue to try to be the link by being in communication with student council and supporting their fine ideas. They have a great leader in Emily Pendleton, uh, understanding the P D I S team's goals and needs, being a resource for teachers to ask when, um, for support when they need something outside of the traditional supplies, maintaining a Facebook presence where parents can ask other parents, like this today, day one or day two. And those are all moderated, of course, um, being an additional adult to supervise events, but, so that all of that doesn't fall on our admin and our teachers. So, if I were a parent wondering why I should get involved with the P T O at middle school, I would suggest that it's a great way to understand what's happening within B M S. It's an opportunity to have face-to-face time with Mr. Harley at every meeting and, um, can impact the culture of B M S positively.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. Sean Fondal, our president, sorry, back here.
You didn't do it, I was, Sean, will you stand up, please? Sean's been great too, he attends our parent executive committee meetings and he's just been a wonderful addition to that group. I know the elementary's learning from him and he's learning from them and so it's just been nice to have that secondary component to our business. Encouraging all of P T As who could, like, members to continue to do it.
Yeah.
Hello, everyone, so, um, my name's Jen Bodiker, I'm actually a Baton Dorf alum, this is kind of a full circle moment, growing up in the, in Baton Dorf and then now being a parent, um, in the school district. Um, so I'm representing Grant Wood P T A, um, I have a first grader and I will have a kindergarten in the fall, which I've already worn Grant Wood, she's coming, so get ready. Um, but the purpose of our P T A is to support and speak on behalf of our children. We enhance the overall learning environment by engaging parents, teachers, students, and the community in order to increase educational opportunities, support Grant Wood family events, provide volunteer opportunities, and recognize our hardworking faculty and staff. We also play an important role in fundraising to provide school improvements, which are a viable success for our school. Um, so same thing like the middle school, um, you know, when I came in, uh, with a kindergarten last year, it was like we were dusting up for COVID. Um, so it's kind of like, well, what events have we done? And they're like, not very many, because of COVID. So, really last year was us trying to kind of regroup, um, you know, get new parents involved, um, and, um, I am involved now as a co-chair, um, and will be the chair next year. Um, but for supporting our school, we have teacher stipends, counselor stipend, um, administrative assistant stipends, um, we have a new therapy dog, Chico, who's amazing, um, that we were able to pray the travel and lodging for two teachers to be able to go get Chico and, and train and, um, bring him back to our school. We have a teacher supply closet, um, so again, that we're making sure that what we can help support our teachers, that they're not taking out of their pocket or that's not coming out of the school's pocket, if there's things that we can be getting, um, from donations or from, um, the P T that we can do that. Um, another way we're supporting the school, uh, which is a new project that I shared at a parent executive council meeting last night, our, uh, principal, uh, Principal Bresman, uh, brought a really cool idea to us. Uh, it's a Hummels stuffed animals, a weighted stuffed animal, um, she had got one sent to her and had been using it in the school and saw just how great of a difference and an impact it had made and she had a great idea of like, why don't we get some donated stuffed animals and we can sew them? And we're all like, we are not going to be sewing stuffed animals, so. So, we said, how about instead, we do this project where we really reach out to our families. We went to the website, did our research to explain what was so great about these stuffed animals, did a sign of genius and said, we want thirty of these, if people can donate, it's forty-five dollars a piece and we have them in one week. Um, so again, really being able to reach out to our families and say, this is something that can help our kids, we want one for every classroom call me corner, as well as throughout the school, because it's not just in the classrooms, right? We have P E, we have art, we have the library, um, the counselor's office. So, um, we just placed the order last night, they'll be getting in next week and then we have a P T A mom that's making collars for all of the stuffed animal puppies. And then the families that, um, purchase those dogs, they're able to name them. So, again, like that type of project that our principal could come to us, that could tell us, hey, I saw this, how it works, what can we do, right? Other than sewing stuffed animals. Um, we can make it happen. Um, so something like that. We also are working on a shade project, um, out in the front of our school. We have a shade canopy, but it is mulch and dirt and grass. Um, it really hasn't, um, been the best setup and so another thing from Principal Bresman said, what if we did a cement patio? You know, would that be something that we could, you know, collaborate on? Um, and so we had done our walk-up on last year, was able to raise about six thousand dollars through that, um, and are gonna try and, um, do another six thousand to be able to do a cement patio out there, so that we can have outdoor classroom space, um, and be able to utilize that space, um, more frequently. Um, so again, that collaboration is so huge, so we're able to, to hear from her. Um, and then we do things like, you know, our, um, breakfast for families, we now call them D I P events, to be more inclusive and we found that it was a great success, um, hearing from our families, that it spoke to them as families, as opposed to having them, um, you know, go to dad and go to mom, we were able to create a more inclusive environment. Um, so making sure that that's a free breakfast, we were able to bring in basketball players from St. Ambrose, um, to create that connection within the community and have those, you know, role models for the students to look up to. Um, we have our book fair, which we do get competitive with parents' executive council meetings, because we love making, um, as much as we can, because then we get classic dollars to be able to get more books for our, for our school. Um, and again, just supporting and recognizing our teachers, having the conference dinners, doing our teacher appreciation activities, um, providing, you know, stipends and, um, providing our classic dollars that we make from, uh, the book fair. So, again, as a parent, you know, it's been super rewarding and also, like I said, a full circle moment to be a student from Baton Dorf, be able to come back, um, and make sure it's a great environment for my kiddos and other kiddos, um, and it's just been a great opportunity and I keep trying everywhere I'm at, like, hey, you know about the P T A, you wanna join? Um, and it's been great, because there's been some people that I had just met and said, oh, I didn't really know about that and now they're in and they're in. So, it's been great to be able to, to get more families involved, um, in our, in our school, so, thank you so much.
Thank you, Jen, thank you, Annie. I just wanna say thanks again, um, Sean and Annie and Jen are just a small representation of the parents that serve on those committees and those organizations. Um, they do so much and our other schools, they weren't unable to be here tonight to share, like, what we heard tonight is going on across all of our school sites, um, all the amazing work that they're doing. I know Mark Twain's got a coming ice truck tomorrow, um, and we're just gearing up for the end of the year. We talked last night at parent executive council about upcoming staff appreciation week and how there, some of the individual activities they're doing, but we talked about how, um, creating a district-wide joint, um, activity, so there'd be popularity across all, all the sites. So, they're a great group to work with, um, the countless hours that they give back, um, both in resources, but also in time, just make our school better. So, thank you, Annie, for speaking tonight, thank you, Jen, for speaking tonight, and just thank you all, all three of you for serving on this group.
Thank you very much. Brings us to six point zero two, do I have a motion?
I'm moved to do the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, proposed budget, that's true.
And one second. Dr. Morris.
Yeah, I know last board meeting, we had the opportunity to look at our proposed budget in more depth. Um, this is our, you know, from a state perspective, this is the, um, required, um, budget that needs to be posted, have a public hearing on, and then, um, with your approval, and we then send it to the state. And obviously, we're, you know, we're using year-over-year trends to determine what our expenditures and revenues, anticipated revenues will be for next year. I'm excited to report what we talked about last time, that our levy, um, is staying stable. This year, it actually decreased by ten percent, but, um, when it's published, it looks, it was staying stable. And so I'm proud of that work that our teams have done so that we can be again responsible. that our teams have done so that we can be, again, responsible stewards of the taxpayer dollars. So, did you, this way, on the floor, propose a proposal?
Any questions? Call call. Director Dorder. Yes. Director Eastman. Yes. Director Lynch.
Yes.
Director Peatich.
Yes.
Director Smithson. Yes. Director Castro.
Yes.
Director Castro.
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us to seven point zero one, updating calendar items. And it's listed on the screen at the left. Director Mochas, modern climate. All right, that brings us to eight point zero one.
I move that the board is entered into closed session to conduct a hearing to suspend or suspend a speed pursuant to Iowa Code Section 21.577E and per hearing discussed records that are required by state or federal law, to be kept confidential is allowed by Iowa Code Section 21.577E.
Do you want a second?
I can second that.
Oh, um. Director Eastman. Yes. Director Lynch.
Yes.
Director Peatich.
Yes.
Director Smithson. Yes. Director Castro.
Yes.
Director Castro.
Yes.
Director Dorder. Yes. Thank you, everyone. And for everyone in the audience, I'm sure Melissa can get you tickets. The play starts in 21 minutes. Musical, and I told you.